Alright, Chumba's welcome to Night City Council. Night City Council is in session. I'm John John the Wise and I have with me the illustrious Mayor of Balancedown himself, James Hutt. How are you, James?
I'm doing great. It's so great to see you again, John John, and answer some questions, I hope, today. We put a new book out. We'll talk about that a little bit. It's a crazy time at Artel.
Yeah, it's a crazy, exciting time.
Excited to be here.
Yeah, you just got back from Gen Con, so we obviously, we gotta hear all about that. We gotta hear about what happened there.
Tons of stuff.
Good. So, uh, let's get into it, actually. Let's just talk about Gen Con first.
Oh, yeah.
Let's talk about that. It's, uh, for those of you that are not aware of what Gen Con is, it is a convention in Indiana. And Indianapolis, Indiana. And it is the Mecca for tabletop gaming. And all the big ones are there. Chaosium, Artel, everything tabletop gaming is going on over there, right? That's the gist.
For sure, for sure. It was crazy. Um, very big convention, lots of play going on. And I got to play with some of you, and it was great. Uh, and I got to just shill a lot, and that was also good. It's fun for me to do the shilling, because I only have to do it, you know, a couple of times a year at conventions. Think if I had to do it more, kinda suck. But I had a great time, needless to say. Um, so we had a big booth and we had a room as well that was dedicated to our games. We were just running games all the time. Um, we're probably gonna, um... Oh, we had this giant circular banner above our booth this year, which was great. Because, um, you know, you could say, "Hey, just look to the sky and you can see where our booth is." Super fun. I think in terms of Gen Con size, it was, uh, it was good. It was getting back to where it needs to be, you know, getting back to normal, right? Um, I was impressed at the amount of people that showed up this year. And next year, I can't wait to go back, because it's gonna be all the way. And I'm ready.
I'm glad that you had a good time. It's definitely one of those bucket list items for me, where I need to somehow someday make it over there and meet everybody.
I will say that this is one of those conventions I think is worth a playing ride.
Yeah, I mean, definitely, if you're into it as much as we are, you know?
Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Anyway, great.
So, run me through, uh, run me through some of the games that you played of Cyberpunk. How did those go? Did you play? Did you run it?
So, I actually, I ran some pretty crazy games of Cyberpunk. I ran, um, two Elf Lines Online games.
Wow, dude.
Really fun. Got to do all the, like, fun, terrible monetization stuff. And I ran some normal games as well, normal.
Yeah.
Normal games of Cyberpunk as well. And I actually ended up running Mike's, uh, Mike Ponsmith Kills Your Character game on Sunday, because he felt ill. He's all good. He's completely alright, but I ended up having to step in and do that. Which was crazy.
Do you know if Lisa's doing okay?
Everybody's doing better. They're on the heel. Do not worry.
Good.
Alright.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, but, uh, other than that, um, I ran some Witcher games as well.
Oh, cool. That's nice. How does that work in the convention setting, uh, the Witcher RPG?
Uh, it works great. Uh, people are really, um, well, okay. So, anyone listening to this podcast is, their soul is already lost. They've probably played Artel games before. This is the, this is the, this is the molten iron core at the center of the, uh, of the orbit, of the, of the center of the planet.
Of Artel?
In terms of fandom for Artel.
Yeah.
Core. Um, so if you're here and you somehow don't know about any of this, this would be really confusing to me.
Yeah, news flash, Artel Saurian Games, there's an S at the end of "games", so they make more than one game.
Yeah, um, anyway, um, but, uh, it's great. People are always a little bit intimidated, and all of my con games end up being brand-new people. Um, that wanna try out, everybody wants to try the system, see if they wanna get it. You know what I mean? That seems to be the go-to thing to do at Gen Con. So, um, you had a lot of people that are like, "Is it like D and D?" And I'm like, "Oh, you just use a D-10 for everything. You would use a D-24." And use G6s for everything that you wouldn't use a D-24, and they get it.
Yeah.
And they have a good time and they like it, and they're, you know, they're being walked through in earlier, uh, a less complicated, right? Session, right? So that's all fine.
I've always enjoyed learning new systems, especially like on-the-fly. Um, you know, instead of having, going through a book, like you're with your buddies, you're just playing. You just get straight into it and you play. I've always loved doing that. Because you learn so much about your own games from all the rules that you get from all these other games, you know? Percentile dice, there's, Games Workshop has been running on the D6 for years. The D6 is all they'll ever need for their game. You know what I mean? So, it's amazing to see all that. I think a lot of people are a lot more open to new systems now, because they played D and D and now they wanna see what's on the other side of that fence. You know what I mean?
It's true. What is on the other side of the hill?
Mm-hmm.
Outside of the play area.
Yeah.
Pardon off by D and D, right?
Yeah, and then you see, it's like...
Right? But I can have a gun in this game? What's that like?
Like, D and D is always gonna be one of the greatest games ever made, and so is Cyberpunk, in my opinion. So, it doesn't, it can be mutually great.
Absolutely, and that's, that's the, you know, that's the enlightened opinion.
Yeah.
I can enjoy things, and you can enjoy things too. Let's play games together.
Yeah.
That's, oof.
Yeah, so that's cool that you got to run some Witcher, you got to run some Cyberpunk. Did you get to play?
Um, I did not get to play in any of the games, typically because, you know, they want me GMing.
Always a bridesmaid. Never the bride.
I, you know, it's fun, it's fun to be a bridesmaid when you designed the chapel.
Yeah, true. I get it, yeah.
I don't need to be a player in my own...
Yeah. Fair enough. That's fair enough.
It's a little too much sometimes. And, you know, anyway. But, uh, yeah, so no, I played some games. It was awesome. Um, the bar was amazing. Uh, of course, beautiful place to buy dice, I bought a lot of dice. A great place to, um, to pick up board games as well. But one thing I really liked about the con is the focus is on tabletop game.
Oh, okay. That's, yeah, I like that too. That's my kinda gem.
Hmm, but I think this year, there was a, there was a healthy dose of board games thrown in as well. Just because board games are on a bit of an upswing.
Was there some wargaming too? I saw some, uh, was in a Monster Fight Club there?
Monster Fight Club was there, indeed, and there were showing off Combat Zone, uh, which is the Cyberpunk, uh...
Skirmish game.
Skirmish game, they've got, coming out, they were doing demos of that. People seemed to be enjoying it. I didn't get to sit down for a game myself, but, um, I heard, I heard laughs, I heard laughs and I saw smiles, so I'm assuming it was good.
Yeah, hopefully the Kickstarter will release, will get it in September. That's the word. So, we've all been waiting patiently for that, hoping.
I don't, I don't have any secret information on it.
Yeah, yeah, don't worry, James. I'm not gonna hold you at gunpoint for all information.
I don't want anyone to think that I know things that I don't, because then they come find me and they try to torture me for things I don't know.
Yeah. The honest truth is...
Torture is like, uh, it was like, there's these things, like, I wouldn't know that even if you weren't torturing me.
Yeah. The honest thing, honestly, if you meet John Kovalevsky, the CEO of Monster Fight Club, chances are he'll spill the beans about everything they're doing to you. Cause he sure has with me. I mean, I'm not gonna say everything that's happening, but, you know, it's so fun. Cause when you show interest, that's what he is. He's that type of guy. He's a gamer.
He is, he is.
You know what I mean?
He's excitable and he loves talking about things that he's doing. And to be honest, I network with a lot of creatives. Those people are just the best to talk to.
Yeah, of course. They're geniuses.
And this and that. Um, I once, uh, I don't know if this is a deep cut, but it's actually totally unrelated. But I think the nicest guy I ever networked with, period, bar none, um, is this 3D modeler, uh, around in Bellevue. And he had done the, um, the Plasma Pistol for Halo.
Oh, wow. Iconic.
Yeah, yeah, iconic. I'm like, dude! I know what that gun sounds like, you know? You get up in the morning, get out, get out of bed, being the guy who did the Plasma Pistol.
One leg at a time in those pants.
Exactly. Uh, did they give you one?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Uh, John Kovalevsky has that energy that reminds me of that guy.
Yeah, man, he's just a heart, he's so excited, like, about the things that he's doing. And he's taking them head-on. So, yeah, I'm excited for that. Uh, any other stories about Gen Con? Did you...
Um, well, we did a, we did a Cyberpunk, um, booth, sorry, blarf. Um, we did a Cyberpunk... Um, I think we're calling them... Panel.
Panel, panel.
Panel. Panel. It's not a meeting. I was gonna say, we had a meeting. Uh, it was like, no, we had a Cyberpunk panel and, um, we revealed some stuff from Black Chrome.
Oh.
Uh, exciting, exciting stuff from Black Chrome.
Anything you can mention here, or is it one of those...
Well, this is, I'm on this podcast too. I couldn't... We already talked about it, Gen Con. It's not like it's privileged information only for the people who are in Gen.
Hey.
Um, Cyberfingers, we're gonna put some Cyberfingers in Black Chrome.
Okay.
We've got a pistol that increases in ROF, uh, if it's been fired the previous turn.
Ooh, like it ramps up?
It ramps up. You shoot it, and then it, it has kinetic recapture.
Hmm.
Turn, and then the turn after that still fires twice. Don't worry, it doesn't go one, two, three, four.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be an example of a dumb design.
That would be game-breaking. The alarm bells would go off, the sirens.
The siren.
Yeah.
It's not here, it's a...
James will kick down your door and say, "What the hell do you think you're doing, son?"
Exactly. I sure hope that that's attached to an airplane. Because that, that sounds like it's attached to an airplane. Um, anyway. What else? Um, we've got a sponsored Cyber Eye. So, it says heads and stuff. It comes pre-installed with Chiron. It's cheaper.
Hmm.
And you have to use an action to turn the head off. So, if it's in combat, or in a situation, in a kinetic situation or some kind.
You're getting an ad during combat? Oh, that's, yeah.
That one's cool.
That's cool.
Bring back the Soviet Cyber Arm, so it's bigger and you can, uh, and cheaper. The fingers don't work as well, so you get a negative to doing stuff with the hand. Basically, anything in the hand has the, um, has a minus. Uh, and you can also see all the internals from the side, so nothing is concealed inside of it.
Oh, cool. So, basically, these are a lot of...
Fucking underneath the skeleton.
Sorry. Say that again. What underneath the skeleton?
Um, essentially, it's more construction-y looking. Um, and, uh, because it does, it's not, um, because it's an open construction, an open frame, if you had a, um, if you had a pop-up weapon, you could see the pop-up weapons still in the thing from the outside, so coverings. Um, it's not, basically, you can still see that there's a gun in there.
Yeah, so basically, you get a cheaper version, but there's a downside to it. It's like, you get what you pay for.
Several downsides.
Yeah, so it sounds like a lot of stuff in Black Chrome is accessible, uh, you know, things that you can give your players that have like a downside, but also it's cheaper and they might have more accessibility to it.
So, there are items like that, and that's the, that's why we wanted to show off the Eye and the Soviet Cyber Arm. Um, but there's also stuff, there's also the high-end that's in there. We wanted a full range
Nice.
of, uh, of experience there. The, um, we also showed off a new car, which is our, um, Ebi, uh, which is the predecessor of the Mi-Mi from 2077. Uh, so that's the small, smart car that says hello when you get in it and goodbye when you get out of it.
Yeah. Is it a single-seater?
Um... So, we just revealed the concepts of these items. We didn't give text.
Got you. Okay.
So, it is small capacity.
Okay, we'll wait and see what that, what that means.
Say the wrong thing.
Yeah.
And get it wrong in my head, cause I don't have the entirety of Black Chrome memories.
Yeah, I understand.
Alright.
Yeah. No worries.
Anyway, so those are sort of the reveals we did there. And, uh, other than that, no, nothing much. Um... Uh, we, we got, uh...
You guys released Tales of the Red.
Uh, yes, we did. Um, Boss Angler, who's a, uh, he's a frequent on our Discord.
Shout-out.
Helped us out with the booth and did great. It was awesome to hang out with, so big thanks to him.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh... Uh, yeah, that was it. Um, we released Tales of the Red. Um, of course. Uh, it did, people liked it. Um, there are nine adventures in there, um, all of which I've, you know, monkeyed with here and there with the wrench, to make sure they're all right.
Full adventures too, right?
All full adventures. It's a chunky book.
Yeah.
Um, so these are like longer, multi-session adventures. Um, probably two-session adventures. We wanted to hit that sweet spot of like, do the beginning and we'll do the ending next week type things. Um, although it does depend how long, um, your game sessions are.
Yeah, and how much you wanna add to it or take away, blah, blah, blah.
Exactly. And how slow your players are.
Yeah, you can't bring it down to, the science is like per session, whatever that means to you. I know in my games usually go slower, so if someone says two sessions, to me, it's probably three or four.
Yeah, they're not one-shots.
Yeah.
Find longer adventures. None of them make one book, and it's chunky and it's full of art, was the other thing. The art line, big. Multiple pieces of art for each adventure. Anyway.
Yeah, cool. I'm excited about that. Sounds good. Alright, so we talked about Gen Con, we talked about all that. I'm glad you got back safely. And you guys are back to work. But before you left, or during, I think, you guys also released the DLC. We just wanted to mention it to you guys. It's a bunch of essays. Uh, it's called Collecting the Random: Ideas, Thoughts, and Lists from the Cyberpunk Red Crew.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, what can you tell us about it quickly?
So, collecting the random is just us going around, um, mostly Jay Gray, I'll put out, not typically an us thing. It, going around and, um, collecting all of the different lists and ideas that we've been putting out on Twitter, uh, in the run-up to the game. Uh, in a place where Cyberpunk fans can see it and digest it and make sense of it in an organized way. Just cause I don't know anyone who thinks going through back tweets to figure out game lore is a good idea.
No, no. And you guys, um, you guys have...
Uh, we wanted to enshrine these ideas in a, in a place where our fans could see them. And, uh, this effort is almost entirely Jay's. All I did in this one is put in 20 kibble flavors. Every time I think of a new kibble flavor, I put it into notes on my phone and I just hit 20.
Fruit fantasy, popcorn, lemon, ginger, aromatic beef.
You can almost tell what I've been eating or thinking about by that.
This is your diet? Uh, that's cool. Adobo, I mean, you're getting adobo in your body. Adobo's great.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Adobo's, adobo is great. Big ups, big ups to my anchor partner for that one.
Yeah.
She's great.
Cool. Um, yeah, so there's a lot of cool stuff in here. There's also reskinning roles such as Netrunner No More, Now You're a Thief, You Specialize in Infiltration, Using Electronic Security Tech, Stealth and Interface to Get in, Get the Goods and Get Out. They're just ideas. They're ideas, uh, to give you if you wanted some inspiration for creating your characters. Complimentary skill check ideas. Like I said, these are miscellaneous ideas, but there's so much juice from this fruit that even though it's only 14 pages, there's a lot of information here to take in.
Since they were all almost originally tweets, it's very crystallized. The content is very small in, um, in, in the, the content-to-word ratio is very high here.
Yeah, for sure.
Juice-to-word is high here. I recommend a look-through and it'll give you an idea for your next game.
Yeah. Multi-classing ideas, Cyberpunk Red fashion, the kibble flavors. Any of this stuff sounds good to you guys? Check it out.
I recommend it specifically for if you're in a situation where you're playing a game and maybe you're starting a new game and three of the people are like, "Oh, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do this." And that one last person is like, "I don't know what the characters are here. What is this? I don't, I'm looking at these roles and do I have to play this if I do this role? And do I have to do this if I do this role?" Um, this, this sort of, this is the sort of thinking they need. They need the opens, they need the mind-opening exercise. Uh, this'll give it to them.
There you go. That's it.
Um, that's it. Uh, we got any time for some questions?
Yeah, we do. I actually have the questions up here. Thank you for mentioning that. Let's get straight to it.
Great, really.
What is that?
I wanted to provide a segue, really, but, you know, I just made everything worse.
No, that was actually a pretty good segue. We got straight to it. No, no dilly-dallying around. And here we go. First question from EmptyDingo. Okay?
Okay.
"When a netrunner or demon is in control of an active defense drone via a control node, does moving the drone use a net action? Or does the drone move independently to where it is directed?"
Yeah, I don't think you need to keep using a net action to keep it afloat if it's in the air, for example. But, um, and I think taking an action to shoot it implies moving it. Um, I don't think you can use multiple net actions on the same device, cause it's one, you activate one drone one time. You would need three drones to get three actions into drones. Um, so I think taking your action means moving it. Move and shoot.
So, you can't use all three actions on controlling your drone?
You need three different, it says that you can't activate a net architecture multiple times in one turn.
Oh, that's right.
All turrets.
Got you. Got you. That's why demons, yeah.
Yep.
Got you. Okay. Uh, also from EmptyDingo, "When controlling an active defense drone via an agent using the electronic security tech skill, does the operator still get their movement action while controlling the drone with their regular action? Or is it more accurate to say that the operator or netrunner, I think that's what they're trying to say, has re-tasked the drone and the drone does its thing with its new targeting protocols autonomously?" Auton, autonomis... Why am I having...
Rolling one with a drone, um, you're controlling it directly through your phone, which means that you have to use your action to move it. So, you using your action is not you using your move action, cause on every turn, you get a move action and an action. Yeah?
I get it. And it's autonomously. I said that right?
Uh, well, you're not control autonomously. Doesn't that mean the drone goes on its own? When you're controlling the drone via a phone, you are not controlling... I was about to pick up my phone, which is what... And show you, but you're both not in the room and also on my phone. Um, so, I'll use this instead. So, you pick up the agent, and you're, you're basically controlling it using the agent.
While you're running.
That, and it is not an autonomous drone at that point. It is a hijacked drone.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much, EmptyDingo, for your questions. This is from Woody. "Is there a way to bring back the old family mechanic from 2020 for nomads? I miss that ability and it is consistent with the flavor of a nomad." From Woody.
Okay, Woody, um... Home, we're in the realm of homebrew now. Welcome to homebrew. Um, I would say, I mean, you could re-theme the lawman. Um, if you re-theme the lawman's backup ability and, uh, and just have those people show up and they're from your nomad pack, then, then there you go.
There you go. I like that.
That would be the, that would be the hack, easiest hack, I think, I could pull off the top of my head. And by the way, I think that is one of the things that tough ideas like that are discussed in Collecting the Random, which we just put out, you should read it.
Yeah, so I think if mechanically you wanna copy something, some kind of mechanic, the lawman has that mechanic with backup. So, you could totally just do that. But if you wanted to stay away from mechanics and make it more of a narrative thing, cause narratively, it's like you're calling your family, you're talking to them, you could have this whole narrative dialogue between them, you can have history between them and explore that. And then now, there's a reason for them to be there. It's not just, "I called them and they're here." It's like, "Oh, this is my brother. That's why he's here."
There's, there is a good point to that, and it's that if you're a nomad, you should role-play as a nomad. You should know who's in your nomad pack. You should talk to them on occasion. They might be able to help you. There's no reason that you need to, we need to... The reason why I went to the mechanical area, it's a good point, John John. Um, the reason why I went to the mechanical area is because he discussed it in rollability sense. Like, what would I do to get the old rollability back? Really, in Cyberpunk Red, um, we've just assumed, we're assuming a lot, we're kind of assuming that if you're part of a family, you're gonna contact them and choose the amount you contact them and the amount that's part of your character. Um, because not every nomad is like, uh, you know, really, really a part of their family at any given time, especially those that end up getting played by players.
Yeah, and, and you can use GM discretion with that so, so well, you know? It's like, you're not gonna call your family to hit up a bank unless you think it's gonna be a big payout. You gotta convince them.
Exactly. Um, it'd probably be easier to convince them, just than some random guys.
Yeah.
Um, maybe. You'd also have to convince them that it was safe-ish.
Yeah.
You know, as their family.
But on the flip side, if you're in like mortal danger and there's a whole gang of people coming after you, that's what your family's there for, is to protect you from that.
You are, as a, as a, um, as a nomad, you're one of the very few character classes that has like this defined entity of NPCs that they, that should like them, or at least know them.
Um, yeah.
The corp is another one, like, there's this whole thing, like, how do I call on corporate resources? Like, we have specific examples, but you could probably get away with a lot more.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you just have to use your skills and use your roles to get that. And other player characters couldn't do that, because they don't have that defined relationship like you do.
Yeah, yeah, and you could really explore that relationship. You know, every family is different. And, you know, some families have an authoritarian that's handling everything. Some families are, you know, a cult. Uh, other families are really just out looking out for each other and love each other. You know what I mean? So, you can decide what you want for your character, work with your game master, and really make it fun between the two of you.
I would say that is, uh, um, this one, the reason why, um, where nomads are now car-focused, um, is because being in a nomad pack does not mean being the nomad. Uh, if you want to be a member of a nomad pack, talk to your GM. You know what I mean? Um, this is, uh, and handle all the family stuff as GM Thea.
Yeah.
Honestly, I can't write an ability that perfectly replicates a complicated family dynamic, um, like you would want to role-play out. Uh, with backup, it kind of works a little bit better, because cops show up, they do this, and they go back home.
Yeah, because the backup that they're calling are just doing a job. That's why it's easy to put them in a mechanic, because like, that's their job. This is what they're doing. It's more than who they are individually.
Yeah. Um, I do recommend, if you play nomad, um, have that discussion with your GM. Like, "Yeah, I'd love to interact with my family more. Who, who are these guys? Let's talk about it." It's that thing where if you ever tell a game- It's that thing where if you ever tell a games master, I'd really like to interact more with my characters, the setting and these, these people I'm related to. What GM wouldn't go? Sounds great.
You're, you're their star player from now on.
It's like, today I think we should, let me do the dishes, babe.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
No, no, I love you. That's why.
Oh, that's so funny.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. All right, Woody, thank you for that. I appreciate that question.
Appreciate it.
Uh, let's move on here. Ooh, I didn't get a name here. I think this is Lomis. Uh, can you expand on how techs are limited after failing a master specialty skill check? Say I were trying to fabricate a tsunami arms helix and failed with no readily available means to increase my chance of success. Am I just unable to fabricate any tsunami arms helixes until my chances increase?
So first thing, in that particular example, you are out a lot of time. You have put in a ton of time, half of the time to do that tsunami army helix. So the first thing you're out is the couple of weeks you just spent trying to make this weapon and failing. Uh, and that's a massive downside because the other, okay, you were doing that, but what was everybody else doing? Um, they were, you know, getting money, doing therapy, um, maybe even, uh, doing their own tech stuff or, uh, perhaps they were in the hospital. I, uh, so that's the, that's the first thing and the main thing you lose is time. Um, if you can't get a higher check, I'm dubious at that. Um, because I think you could get a higher check. Uh, you would just need like, um, you're assuming that you used four times, four X time and assistance and blew all of your luck, right? Um, that assist had to be there. The four X time made that helix take months, right? Uh, and you blew all of your luck and you still failed. Uh, the, so bar minimum, get new materials. Try it again with new materials. Um,
Could you maybe use some IP to increase the skill and now your chances have increased?
And yes, you can do that too. Um, you could buy a tech scanner to do that. Um, this theoretically assumes they've done literally everything possible. Um, which is unrealistic in this example.
Um, this theory.
The theory, the hardened cr- soft rules of this is a month of downtime, then you can do it again. At this point, it's purposefully GM Theat. Um, the game of Cyberpunk is not really played in, um, at the speed that the tech role wants. Um, there's a whole bunch of stuff that's gonna happen.
Mm-hmm.
And I imagine after a certain amount of time, there's a reason I don't tell you the exact amount of time that I want you to spend in between failed projects. Um, and that's because I want you to try to find a way to get a bonus. Because I want you to succeed that role as, as the game designer. We want you to succeed, um, the role. We want you to retry it. We want you to go on a quest to get the thing that's gonna help you get a higher bonus. You can retry it.
Thing. So basically, you're saying that if you've exhausted all your resources and it hasn't happened to you, then now it's become a life of its own.
All of your resources, um, possible. And nothing's, uh, how long does it take to retry? Uh, you can't retry until you get another check. I would say bare minimum, you have to wait a certain amount of time that GM advance and bare minimum you would have to, uh, you would have to also get new materials at that point. And if you're rebuying in the materials, um, I don't see any reason you can't try it again.
Yeah, or find a night market so you don't have to worry about it.
Try getting assisted on the check. Try tech scanner, try blowing more luck.
There you go. IP. Yeah, you get luck every session, so.
There you go.
Yeah, every session you could try. Uh, all right, another question from Lomis. By rules as written, can you evade while grappling? Can I evade ranged or melee attacks from other player characters or enemies in the grapple and/or from people outside of the grapple?
Yeah, of course.
So you could still evade while you're grappling?
So there's plenty of action movies that do this. Um, it's an action movie thing. I'm grappling this guy, oh, this guy's gonna shoot, huh! Right? Uh, a grapple isn't like a full wrestle. A grapple is I have an hand on you, right? It's that thing where, um, have you seen the thing where John Wick grabs somebody's shoulder and then he shoots his gun into them?
Yeah, yeah.
He's grappling them and then shooting them.
Yeah.
Uh, have you seen the thing where John Wick does that, but then somebody else tries to shoot him while he's doing that and he goes, who?
Yep, yep, yeah.
Do it and so can you.
John Wick is like the perfect Cyberpunk character.
I watched so many.
Yeah.
John Wick scenes ago, uh, let's make sure that we can do that in our system. Okay, it's good. Oh, we can do that? Yep. Oh, thank God.
Okay, uh, next question. Thank you so much, Lomis. Uh, this is from Naynad. This is a great question. We love seeing this kind of question. For a game master with only limited experience in classic D and D systems, would you recommend letting players play some of the advanced classes for the first few sessions? Talking mostly exec, journalist, but even the netrunner.
Um, I would say yes. Um, you already have experience in D and D. Uh, it's clear. Um, I'm taking it you have more than one session of D and D under your belt. Um, you can handle this. I hate to say it. You can do it. Uh, and uh, if you're not comfortable with those areas of the system, I think you can learn them enough to be comfortable, um, by session zero. Uh, especially if a player said, hey, I wanna play a this, then brush up on the chapter and you're good, man. You got this.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it might seem a little bit daunting at first, you know, because the exec basically has another stat block with them. They have a person that you have to roleplay. Uh, the journalist, uh, or the media has rumors that basically you're feeding them plot points and you have to figure out how they're getting those plot points. And the netrunner plays a totally different game. So I get, uh, but that's only, it's, it used to be a way more complicated game. Now it's a really streamlined fun game that can be weaved in and out of the game, uh, the main game at any point.
Playing, a player playing the media makes your job easier as a GM, not harder.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And a player playing a corp, uh, so an exec, be specific, um, actually also makes your job easier, not harder. Um, because now you have a new, another NPC in the room um, to interact with who's somewhat allied to the players. And the exec roles are pretty easy. You just roll to see if they roll under loyalty and then it's a yes, no. Um, I think the real question here is the netrunner and it is harder to learn than the other roles. Um, but as a games master, it's good to know it. Um, because you kind of want to have netrunners in your game, even if your players aren't netrunners.
My advice for having netrunners, because I've had many, is make sure that your first few, uh, net architectures are just really simple. I'll give you my most simple formula and it's worked great. Password, black ice, control. That's it. Password to get in the system, you fight a black ice, you kill it. Then you have control of whatever device they were trying to hack and
That is, that is a good one.
It just, it's, you get used to it, you understand it, you understand how black ice work, how the netrunner works, and then you could be more creative down the line, is what I would say.
I, I will say that you wanna, you wanna know how the netrunner is played so that you can send a netrunner against your party because it's a very cyberpunk fight to be in a space and buildings, turrets have been turned against you or something. Uh, I think that's cool.
Yeah, it is. There's so much to explore in the net space and you can also put your netrunner in this position where the rest of the party absolutely needs them to fulfill this task of theirs or their lives depend on it. And that's what makes the most intense netrunning sessions where everybody around the table is like giving advice, like, what do, what can we do? What can we do? You know? And it's great. I've, I've been through that.
Rock on. Okay, here's the question.
What is it?
We got that. Next question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, you got it. Uh, this is from Tricky Taco. Question for the Night City Council. Uh, what's the point of having five hell, oh, we talked about this. Uh, we talked about that last time. The, uh, Five Hellhound Kerberos deck.
Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we talked about that last session. It's a specialized, uh, deck. So I hope that answered your question.
Only holds three hellhounds.
Yeah, that's right.
What we talked about last time.
This is from Dreyfus. Do hostile black ice count as programs for an anti-programmed black ice you have installed on your own deck? Can I leave a killer in wait on the first floor of the architecture and lead hostile black ice that I encounter back to the killer? So what he's trying to say is you, you leave a killer in the first floor and then you kite the other black ice to the killer, the killer kills them.
Okay, um, yeah.
I think it's cool. That's cool too. Yeah.
That worked.
That works.
What I intended.
There it is. All right, Dreyfus. Assuming passwords aren't changing, that sounds cool and expensive. Would jacking out after a successful backdoor check let your cyberdeck remember the password when you jacked back in? Or would you need to complete another successful backdoor to defeat the password?
You learn the password when you do it. Um, I would say if you come back in a week, um, don't be surprised if the password changed. Uh, but, uh, you learn the password when you backdoor it.
There it is. Okay. Um, this, uh, once again, I got two more from Dreyfus. I do this in first come, first serve order.
Fair enough.
When are other, yeah, this, this proves it. Another from Dreyfus. When are other netrunners visible to you in the same architecture? If I'm at the bottom of one with, you know, doing something, does someone in the first floor know that I'm there?
No.
Unless, unless a demon tells them, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
You can see the whole architecture. Essentially, the demon is the architecture at that point.
Yeah.
Um, they're kind of, you know, they have the, they have the omnivore. Um, nothing lets you hide from demons yet.
Yeah, there you go. Um, let's see.
So if they came into a room that I had seen, for example, um, as the attacking netrunner to activate a control node, I would say, oh, wait, there's a netrunner here. And if I did, if it revealed the room they were in, uh, then it would also say, oh, wait, there's a netrunner here.
Okay, there you go.
Like, if you don't know netrunner is there, people find out very quickly.
Yeah, because they're coming. What information does Pathfinder reveal, uh, other than the amount of floors? Does it reveal any information about black ice or control nodes or anything?
Oh, yeah, it tells you it's there.
It tells, does it tell you stats?
File is. It'll tell you what the control node does.
Mm-hmm.
If file there, you won't know the file until you put the file on your thing and open it up.
Gotcha. You'll have like the file name, but not know what it is.
You won't know the file name either.
Oh, wow, okay. Okay, that's good. Thank you, Dreyfus. Uh, my, this is from Chris the Redbeard. My player wants to introduce power armor to red. Any ideas how it can be done?
Um, use linear frame as the base. Uh,
Homebrew, right? This is a homebrew, by the way.
Homebrew. Um, I would say linear frame and, um, try your best with SP on that linear frame. That'll get you most of the way.
There you go.
I'd say step in linear frame is 90% of what you need.
Uh, okay. I have two, three more questions and that's all the questions.
Woo!
But the last two are like, we could do a whole podcast on the last two.
Yeah, well.
We'll, we'll do as much as we can on this, on these. Okay, so then this next one. How far out will trauma team go to service a client? Do they have a range of operations? That's from Nyliss Astalon.
Uh, trauma team can fly. Um, so you have to be pretty far into the wilderness for them not to come get you.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um, and, you know, likely you'll know, right?
They need somewhere to land, right?
They do need somewhere to land, but they're very happy with making a place to land as well. Uh, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Or dropping people in instead of landing.
Yeah, hot Trump.
Um, my point is that if you're in a busted up town that's a couple of miles outside of Night City, they'll probably come get you.
Gotcha.
Be in the middle of BF nowhere.
Yeah. Okay.
And there are other trauma teams other than Night City. So if you are in the middle of BF nowhere, you might get picked out by people, uh, trauma team coming out of Las Vegas. You know what I mean? There are dead zones. If you're in Antarctica, you are screwed. Um, but, uh, there are probably not very many places that are actual dead zones for trauma team.
There you go. Hope that answered your question. So the range is very, very large.
It's, you would totally get an email saying, hey, uh, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, your agent will get a little, deet deet, you are out of trauma team range. Please return for your safety.
Yeah, yeah, for your own safety.
Yeah. Okay, uh, I'm gonna read you this whole question. We're probably just gonna end on this one and have the last one for next time.
Good.
Uh, this is from Darkwing2k6. How do you deal with one combat-focused power gamer in amongst a group of non-power gamers? I gotta read this whole thing. As an example for clarification, I have one player who will always munchkin and search the net for power builds and combos, although he denies this, and then proceed to one-shot enemies and breeze through combats. In our last game, Star Wars D6, I went down the route of giving him hardened moocs to fight, where this almost challenged him. It also very nearly killed off my other players. A little bit unfair on them. I also fear that if I keep directing powerful opponents at him whilst the rest deal with chumps, it will only reinforce this behavior and make him de facto Superman to deal with big bad whilst the rest of, rest are left behind as support characters. I don't want to tell him he can't do this as it is clearly how he likes to play the games, but I don't know how to balance this out to be fair with the other players.
Okay, so. Uh, if you wanna play a guy that's really good at combat in Cyberpunk, you can. And you can play a guy that's really good at combat. You can play John Wick. Uh, but the game is set up for that disparity. Uh, unlike in other games like fifth edition where my fifth level character is woefully underprepared for combat. Uh, and your fifth level character is incred- might as well be a seventh level character, right? Um, that makes sense in D and D because D and D has a power scaling, right? So in order to send a threat for the person who might as well be seventh level at him, uh, you need to hire CR, right? Um, about balancing for encounters in D and D versus balancing encounters in Cyberpunk is in Cyberpunk, it's okay to have an asymmetric party. Um, you will have an asymmetric experience. And, um, my recommendation is not that you tell this person not to play these characters. Um, because they're just, they just wanna play, um, but if you build like little bits into your, into your character, you will be able to do combat very, very well in Cyberpunk. If you play a solo with a maximum melee skill, if you play a solo with a maximum shooting skill of any kind and get a medium okay weapon, you will be very, very good at combat. If you get two cybernetic upgrades, you'll be extremely good at combat. Um, but, uh, so, uh, couple, there's, there's a lot to go on here. First off, this guy should play whatever they want. Um, because as a, that's like the one part of the world that the player gets to control. Who, what am I playing? Um, they need the, they need to get that, um, what's, what's known as out of their system. You know what I mean? They got, they get to live out their perfect power fantasy, right? Um, I will, in power fantasies, um, raising the stakes, AKA bringing in the hardened people, that's great, but that's a narrative device. That's not a balancing device. Uh, if you use it as an, as a balancing device, uh, you will create a situation where they don't feel like the story is, that they feel, they feel an asymmetry, right? Cause they'll feel like I'm a badass, but I keep finding badasses everywhere I go, even at the supermarket.
Uh, you're punishing me for being a badass.
You're punishing me for being a badass and you're punishing the other players more. But here's the thing, it's not a punishment. You're not, the whole thing of like balance the table, balance the party, um, in order to provide balanced encounters, this isn't food pyramid.
Yeah.
The real way to do it is to tell the type of story where if the other players in the party are actually like non-combat characters, then they wanna be the non-combat characters. You either say, hey, do any of you wanna play like a combat character too? Right? Um, if they want, if they're like, I wanna be the med tech that doesn't have a melee skill. I wanna be the med tech that only uses brawling to attack. I wanna be the media that has like, can speak seven languages and does and, then they've chosen those roles. You know what I mean? Um, still make the, uh, I, I would say do the default scaling. Um, there are, um, read my hardened series. Um, what is a hardened character? Um, and then there's an important one, what is a hardened party? Cause if you only have one hardened character, you can send hardened mooks. But if you don't have a hardened party, then you can't send the hardened lieutenants or higher, because that creates that asymmetry where I find badasses everywhere I go, even at the grocery store. Um, I will say, uh, if the players are naturally like, I'm the medic, I, you know, I support this guy, then they're forming their own party dynamic around this combat character. And as long as they're showing up to every session of the game, I see no problems. Um, haven't seen this type of behavior affect, um, attendance, that's a good sign. Um, if the behavior is affecting attendance, then you actually do need to have that conversation where, okay. If it's starting to piss other people off, not just making your job harder, that's a different story. Um, but my recommendation, get some hardened mooks out, challenge them at the mooc level, at the grunt goon level, right? Um, and, uh, run, run straight for the other ones. Uh, because I suspect that you might have one hardened character in a non-hardened party. Uh, and, uh, there are some, there's some words in the hardened series for how to. Um, I will say it is an interesting challenge. Um, I will say the good thing about munchkin char, munchkin players and munchkin characters is that they're typically invested in your campaign. Uh, I would take a munchkin player any day over a disinterested player. Uh, so, uh, what you, what you got is a blessing in disguise. It's a difficult challenge and, um, it, uh, it certainly makes things interesting. Um, I would say try not to have that, try to have the, the talk of like, hey, what do you all do as a team, like a, a unit? Team unit, like, hey, are we all scavengers? Are we a med tech team? Are we a rocker boy? Um, are we like, um, a band or something? Um, there's a section on the core book, um, meet the teams. Um, that's great to read, because if everyone's on one of those meet the teams things, then this does not, then this munchkin player is not affecting the party experience because you're on a, you're on a team storyline. Um, and I, I've seen this go multiple ways, so I, I wish you luck. Uh, of course.
Yeah.
You ever run into this, John John?
Oh yeah, definitely. And in fact, I used to take a really hard stance against these types of players and I had like some kind of, uh, I don't know, not hatred, but I kind of like resented power gamers and kinda looked down upon them. And, uh, it was really for no reason until I realized, you know, it's, it's really dumb to think that way, because like we iterated before, it's how we like to play the game. Some people like that power fantasy, some people don't. It doesn't mean anybody's right or wrong. You know, we're all adults rolling dice in a, in a room pretending to be other people, all right? We have no one, we can't judge each other.
And the last thing I wanna do is penalize anyone for playing, I wanna play like a cool dude like Batman.
Yeah.
You know, because at a younger age, I wanted to play a cool dude that was like Batman. Everybody wants to be Batman, okay? Except Batman, he's Batman.
And the balance, uh, th- this idea that it needs to be a balanced game, I think is, uh, has like a logical fallacy connected to it.
In, in D and D, if you don't have a balanced party like this, it does cause trouble.
Mm-hmm.
As of the way D and D scales over 20 levels, but we don't scale over 20 levels. Here it doesn't cause problems. Do it here, I would say do it here so they don't do it in your D and D game.
Well, I would even argue that the problems that it causes are part of why it's a fun and interesting story. You know what I mean? The imbalance, uh, can cause, uh, a narrative to, to emerge from your game, you know? It's something that, there, there's challenges that your players just cannot surpass. No matter how hard they try and they almost lose their lives doing it. And I think that adds so much to the game. So I wouldn't focus too hard on trying to counteract one player's character, because like you said, you put that, put them in that position and the other characters almost died. You know?
Yeah.
So.
That's why I'm saying only use hardened mooks, cause you're, you have one hardened character in a non-hardened party.
Yeah.
Yeah, read the, that's the, the required reading for the, the answer to this question is you gotta read the hardened series.
Yeah.
Cause they'll do what not to do. Um, and there's plenty of spicy things in there to, uh, to add the spice that's not gonna uh, kill your other characters.
And I mean, combat in the core rulebook of Cyberpunk Red and even D and D and all these other RPGs is this small. It's this small of a section in the book. If somebody wants to live and die by this small section and this is what gives them joy, let them have it. Because there's all kinds of other sections for other players and you should let them have that too.
Yeah, um, because if you start jacking up threats, you also jack up rewards and then you end up with the problem of hand me down guns.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would, I would keep the rewards small and keep those, use the hardened mooks, but don't use hardened lieutenants unless there's other people in the group that are like, okay, I wanna play, I wanna try being John Wick 2. You could be John Wick 3 and you could be John Wick, uh, we'll just call you John Wick instead of John Wick 4.
There you go.
Everybody knows.
Well, we wanna say Darkwing 2K6, we hope you have wonderful games. Uh, happy gaming to you all, happy safe gaming. Thank you so much for your question. Brady Hargit will get to your question next time, I promise you. And actually we have a few more in my emails that I need to transfer over to this document.
Down to our last, we're not down to our last one.
Yeah, no, we still have some more, so don't worry. Uh, James, anything you wanna tell the kind people before we sign off?
Um, thank you to everyone who came up and said hi at Gen Con. I really appreciated that. Um, and, uh, I had a great time, so thanks for being a part of, we had a great time. Um, it was great to see you again, John John.
Likewise, buddy.
For answering more questions, uh, next council.
Yeah, that's it. That's what we'll do. Uh, always a pleasure talking to you, James. I love your insight and.
Oh, and I go buy, um, Tales of the Red.
Yeah.
Go buy that, that's a new book.
Because if you buy, by the way, if you buy the physical copy, go to bitsandmortar.com.
There you go.
Go to bitsandmortar.com and search and find your nearest FLGS that is affiliated with them. It's very easy to affiliate. You just send them an email and they're like, yeah, we'll put you in the system. So even if your FLGS is not affiliated with them, go talk to them and tell them, hey, do it. Because when you buy the physical copy of Tales of the Red, the core rulebook, all kinds of Artel Sorian products, Chaosium products, the list is large. You also get a free PDF copy, an official free PDF coffee, copy. So it's two for the price of one. You get to help that store and you get to get the PDF copy as well.
We love, we love Bits and Mortar, we love supporting our friendly local game stores. If you're gonna, or buy it there.
Yeah, and, uh, here's a little hack for you guys. If you preorder a book, you can get the PDF copy if it's available before you get the physical copy.
That is true.
It's a little hack for you guys, if you wanna look at Tales of the Red right now.
And of course they're also on drive through RPGs if you just want it.
Yeah, you could also, and you can get it from the Artel Sorian, uh, official website.
Of course.
Yeah. All right, thank you so much. Uh, council is in session or council is, I did it again.
Oh, yeah, council.
Count, not in session, it is adjourned. It is adjourned, true. Thank you so much for your support and love. We hope you guys have great games, okay? Have a good one, bye.